... would be Seymour tenth grader and Brianna Bach, a ninth grader, and the alternate was Alexandra Guinnerman. In the Model UN, they have a competition, if you will, in Middleton every year that they do now. This is kind of a precursor for their big event in Chicago in a few weeks. And you might be aware, Model UN has grown significantly in the last four, five, six years. And at a competition, I think that Jeremy Wallace shared this information with you on two Saturdays ago. There were seven schools involved in Milton and twenty-eight awards were given out. And we brought home seven, I'm sorry, fourteen. We brought home half of the awards, the seven schools. So they're getting geared up now for Chicago. Our drama club just competed at state level and were very successful. That was in Whitewater this last weekend. And they received the following recognition: outstanding ensemble, outstanding crew, outstanding directing. And Becky Osmond is our director, works with the kids. And students Reece Bailey and Tyree Jensen received outstanding acting awards. So they're just wrapping up with the one act play and had a really successful season. And finally, cross-country coach Jeremy Deuce was selected as region or district five cross-country coach of the year. And Jeremy, I think we've received that recognition last fall off. But as you know, cross-country had a really great year, won sectionals and was fourth in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other recognitions? Yes?
Well, and I know we're going to talk about this, but I just think our school district report card, which was published today, when you look at the really nice comparison that Lisa did for us over the last years, our district, again, this year exceeds expectations and has increased their overall reading from 2015, sixteen, and 2013, fourteen. So congratulations all of you for all the work that you do and help them make us better every day.
All right. That'll take us to our correspondence and announcement section. And tonight we have information about board elections.
So annually, at this time, we have a required notice that goes out with the upcoming election, or actually for the April election. And so all the information that candidates need to complete, Joyce Ham in our office has all that information and coordinates all that. And so on your board docs is the copy of the actual election notice, as well as some information that we'll post on the website for more information. So again, anyone that has any interest or questions about the election can contact Joyce at our office.
All right. Thank you. Any other correspondence tonight? All right. That will take us to our special reports. And we need to make a note that the MG twenty-one annual report has been moved to the December thirteenth meeting. And so we will move now to our facilities advisory committee update.
I'm cheating off my notes. All right. So the facility committee for facility advisement has met two times now. It was the end of the month of November and late October, I guess. Talking about different things. We've started out learning what the charge of the committee was, some of the ground rules, some of the things that we're going to be looking at. So we've gotten through that. We learned that the student population is up over four hundred students across the district since 2010. So that's a pretty big increase. Looked at the projections for the next twenty years as we're looking at this as a long-term issue for the district. That's supposed to have an increase of about a thousand kids by 2030. So that's a significant increase over the next twenty years. By 2020, there are three schools that will be projected to be over capacity at Taylor Prairie, Cottage Grove, and GDS is already over capacity. The other highlight that I've got out of this is that there's lots of different configuration options as we look at the different plans and facilities. But that the biggest one that is that the admin recommends that fifth grade stays at an elementary level. So that will be something key, I think, as we move forward. Got anything?
It's a line.
All right. Questions that's come out of the committee so far, as we've talked through various things, is whether or not Maywood is an option. So we'll take a look at that as we go through and do some different discussions. What impact does open enrollment have on these projections and these numbers? And then our next meeting is next Tuesday. So I guess now the thing is, what questions do you guys have? I like this. I thought it was done. We're going to get in and out quick.
Some things to take, I don't think, perhaps you probably not prepared to answer these, but things to take back to the group to take a look at. In terms of the enrollment projections in Monona, I would assume that if we were using Maywood, it would be because of an elementary enrollment in Monona. Presentable way.
Fair, I'm not, yeah, I don't want to answer pretty, but good assumption.
Where do the projections say that we have, when do the projections say we will have issues with Winnequa?
I don't.
In terms of capacity?
Yeah, I don't believe Winnequa ever gets to capacity through thirty, or through twenty, thirty.
Projections, yeah.
You know, I think it gets close towards the end of the last half of the twenties. But I don't think it ever fully reaches capacity.
All right. When you look at the capacity issues in Cottage Grove, Taylor Prairie, and GDS, what specifically is the limiting factor in the building in terms of the capacity? In other words, is it classroom spaces, is it common spaces? What is it that's, what do we run out of first, I guess? Because that helps figure out what the solution is.
One of the questions that was asked was exactly that. The, what we've got back from the architects and the contractors is that, let's say you're going to add on to GDS, that is an option. But the, based on the classroom or the gym being in the center, the common areas, those areas don't necessarily allow for some of that expansion easily. So those would be limiting factors. It's not just the classrooms. It's the common areas that can limit the capacity of the school also. So, but that's one of the questions that we've discussed a little bit.
Right. And right now we have fifth grade, Cottage Grove for fifth grade in that building. Awesome. And then if we take that out, what happens to the capacity? When do we have an issue with capacity in that building?
That I don't know.
Seems to me like a good question to look at. And if that solves our problems.
If you don't mind, I could.
We'll just send them the can for you.
And that's a great question. And the information the committee has gotten so far shows, you know, the projections we got from the enrollment studies. To get into that specific, we're going to provide some additional graphics to the committee next Tuesday. So that's the question we need to know.
These are sort of things, these are questions to be answered, not that I expect to have answers to them tonight. And then what, again, right. And so actually, all three of those schools, what is the capacity limit? And what at Cottage Grove, Taylor Prairie? I think most important is what is a part of the building that's limiting our capacity?
Anybody else?
All right. Thank you.
I got to be on the first round of the facilities advisory committee three years ago when it first started. And I wanted to first say I appreciate what you're doing and thank you because there's a lot of just digging into the nitty-gritty of the whole thing to start seeing what the scope is. And the thing that I'm most interested in is to hear where this committee lands on the discussion of grade configuration, in particular with the schools in Cottage Grove. Because to me, there was a clear answer after looking at the physical plan, at the buildings that we have, in particular Taylor Prairie. And to me, at the time I looked at that three years ago, I came away with a pretty clear idea of what I thought would make sense. So I'm going to be really interested just to hear what this committee looks at those same buildings, the same physical size of children and the size of those buildings that we have. And starts to think about what makes sense for grade configuration among the schools. And in particular, the social and cultural aspects of grade configuration. How involvement in schools differs when you have a broader grade span compared to a narrower grade span? And what the impact is on curriculum when you have a narrower grade span? And what more you might be able to do with collaborations and things among a larger cohort of kids the same age? I'm just dying to hear where this committee lands on that and how that plays into the next steps of what kind of growth opportunities there are going to be. So thank you for what you're doing and come back soon and tell us what you're working on. And if there's any thing that we can do to help. I mean, Dan knows where we are all the time, so we're here rooting for you to get to. Some recommendations to come back to us.
Thank you, Susan.
I echo that same thought. The board had talked about configurations and had some kind of unified thoughts. But one of the things we had available to us, and I'm hoping we at least make it available to the committee because I know that was one of the questions in your committee, and that was what research do you have on grade configurations and how that affects the culture and the academic achievement? And there's some very clear research on that that talks about the configurations and where you see higher predictors for success. And then how does that weigh against, and I think Carrie, not to say words for her, but I think that was, things the board talked about was, there was research and then how does that affect the community as it would be? So I think that was really helpful to see that. Again, it talked specifically about culture and achievement, and there was some really good, strong research on those pieces. So, I mean, even if you just give them the resource list, it's a helpful thing to have.
Okay. All right. And I would like to, I'm not sure how, this isn't a directive. It's just, I'm just trying to sort out my audience here. I'm interested in, let me start over. First of all, I think your sessions have been highly organized and I've been really impressed with the level of conversation. And I appreciate that all voices are not the same and that people are willing to sit around a table and put themselves out there. So it's just, I want to say one more time, thank you. Thank you for your investment. The other thing that I think about at this table is, what are the possibles for the next year? The next five, the next ten, the next twenty, the next thirty? And I think sometimes those decisions become challenging because you have multiple interests at play: financial, you know, student learning, staffing, things that happen downtown, et cetera. And you're always trying to make the best decision at that time. But sometimes we also have to look ahead. You have to do all of it at the same, you know, moment and figure out where to put your resources. So going forward, I'm interested in hearing multiple voices from both our communities engage in that kind of conversation as well. So once you get the Lego pieces on the table, so to speak, what might the priorities look like? What might you, as a group, kind of rally behind for our short term, midterm, and long term? I'm really interested to see and hear that. So again, thank you for your work.
Frau, just yet, I think taking a piece of that thought is, it's really important as we report out, that we are seeing a coming to agreement because it's a unified school district. Doesn't matter where you live. But it's important, I think, as we have the committee report out, that it's clear that there isn't, that we're working together as a committee, that there's strong collaboration. And I've observed all the meetings and it's absolutely incredible how hard people are working to learn the material and then interact and be facilitated in the work afterwards. It's really nice. And the mix is nice because you take that mix.
Thank you, Susan.
Well, I would echo that. I watched the last meeting. I think I was gone for the first one, but I just wanted to. And I plan to be here next Tuesday. But I think the group is very much operating district, from at least the conversations I heard. I saw, heard a lot of district-wide concerns. And I think the questions that you raised at the last meeting for further information are excellent. I think some of the ones you've heard tonight come after those. But I think, so I really appreciate how well laid out it's been and the level of participation from everyone as far as I could see. I mean, there are not too many people remaining quiet at the various table groups, so keep on keeping on.
Yeah, from my perspective, having sat in your chair before, you know, this committee is very well, the charge is very direct, it's very open, but it's laid out with Dan and the consultants on how we get our information, the order that we're going through the steps. All of that stuff is top-notch. And to speak to the committee, it's, I believe it's ten-ten from each city. You know, there's a pretty wide range of parents with young kids and retirees. So, you know, there's this pretty diverse group as far as I can tell from talking to people so far. So I think it's a good cross-section for the district as a whole. And, you know, whatever the plan is, we just have to realize that in four or five years, it's not going to be the same plan, you know, because nothing changes, or nothing changes in school districts.
And I would mention, because I don't know, you may have mentioned it, I just kind of missed it, that you all have been offered the opportunity to go through the different schools and walk through the different schools.
Correct. The building tours happened, one last week and one today. I don't know how those were attended. I was busy, couldn't get to either one.
Sure.
So Dan, if you could.
So we had a total of, I think, five different committee members were able to make, you know, one or the other. So one of the things, some of the folks who were on the committee, the previous committee, you know, three years ago, had an opportunity to go through at that time. Tomorrow, or it's going to be Tuesday night, we'll talk about, there are a couple of people that are interested that just couldn't make those times work, and we'll set up some follow-up opportunities for them as well to make sure everyone has a chance to get through. I think we also talked about having some pictures and so on, and some of those talking points, you know, from those tours as well available.
What was really interesting to be on one of those tours today, and again, Angie kind of led that tour and was very gracious and with the group that, in answering questions, I mean, every kind of question. But one of the members of that committee was a teacher in that building and had the historic legacy about how it had been used and how big and figured and, you know, what the problems were and what the challenges and barriers were. And then Angie was really articulate about going through what those pieces are today. The things that are working and the things that clearly are challenging now and things that are going to be even more challenging later. And again, those were really helpful things to hear. So thank you for taking them on the tours because I think that was really valuable.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. That'll take us to our administrative reports with our superintendent.
Okay. So we originally had a second report scheduled tonight, so I chose not to, you know, have anything for tonight. And so we do have something for the next meeting.
And that'll take us to our board reports. And I believe Carrie is first.
So I can report briefly on the Committee Engagement, Communication, and Government Relations Committee. You'll recall that the last time this committee met, we were divided into three workgroups. And those workgroups continued plugging away at our most recent meeting. What we did at our most recent meeting was share back the results, where the workgroups got to. And we now have identified next steps. We don't have anything tonight for this November twenty-first meeting that those groups wanted to bring forward here yet to the board. It's possible that by mid-December, we might have something. But the next meeting of the Committee Engagement Committee will be focused on the facility's long-range planning. So we are going to pause from our workgroups that we've been on. Next time, hear a little bit more in detail what David and Jason were just talking about, and then resume these again. So one thing that I liked, I mean, I like a lot of things, but one thing that I especially like of the reports that we got from the workgroups, the first one proposed a slight change to the wording of how we're going to talk about the charge to that group. And just looking to see, so the language of the charge now is, "Improvement in the relationship between the school district and underserved groups within our diverse multicultural community by fostering dialogue and partnerships." So that's, I think, extremely tightened-up version of what we had as a rambling first draft charge to that group that had been just brainstormed and sticking out, this kind of thing. So this is a more solidified charge. The second group was assessing school and community groups in Cottage Grove and Monona. And we started doing that and came up with some criteria for identifying those and have a next step in place now. And the third group was doing research ma, resource mapping and has a clear plan for how to move forward as well. So for where I said, I think the committee's moving along how we'd hoped. I have joked all along, people keep showing up. And I think that's a good thing because we're getting some things that they can see where we still need to lay the foundation of a few things in order to be able to come back to this board and maybe make some requests for next steps.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I would just say that when the various committees went through the reports at the last meeting, the other thing I thought was really nice to hear was the engagement of the full committee at that point. Because we had, I think, all three of us got really good suggestions for our groups, for things to add, or just good feedback. So, yeah, it's really, I think that kind of kick-started everybody being able to participate and they, you know, it's a good group.
Yeah, that's what I'd add as well. Just tremendously talented and insightful group. I mean, yes, I'm really excited about working, continuing to work with individuals that we have on the committee.
All right. Thank you. And that will take us to our legislative liaison report with Susan Fox.
We had actually gotten some information on this last spring, early summer from WSB. But Peter and I both actually attended a Monona community meeting on this last Thursday. And I asked to have it added because it's kind of timely in terms of what's going on with it. It's hard, it's fairly complex issue, so just to try to explain it in a nutshell. But I hope you had time to review the material here. You may have heard that the city of Monona is being sued by Walmart to have its property assessment reduced very significantly. The one comment in the article that was printed that said we would lose a significant amount of dollars, it's not that we would lose the dollars so much as that we would have to make them up. I mean, the amount, the estimated amount. And this, the alder, Andrew Kitser, who wrote this op-ed for Monona specifically, met with the city finance director and said that if Walmart was successful in devaluing their current property assessment that's twenty-eight point five million, they want it devalued by nineteen million to nine point five million. And the effect of that would be reduced tax bill of four hundred and thirty-three thousand on the share, the city's share of that is a hundred and eleven thousand, the school district's is two forty-five thousand. So what would happen is not that we would lose the money, but necessarily, but as the tax base in Monona goes down, it's going to push more of it to Cottage Grove as well. And because we look at the district as a whole. And so all the citizens of both communities would have to make up that two hundred and forty-five thousand if we weren't able to make cuts. So when we look ahead at, you know, we just passed an operating referendum and it's been five years, we're going to have to deal with that again. We're looking at these other issues. It makes all of that very challenging. And it's a huge issue also in, well, for us, that's just one store. There are eight big box stores in Monona. I'm not sure about Cottage Grove. So it could have a huge impact if this loss prevails. So there are two bills pending in the state legislature right now, similar to what was already passed in Indiana and Michigan, that's taken some similar steps that would require, it would define very clearly by statute how the property taxes were determined by these big box stores. What they're arguing is, they should be taxed, their property should be valued the same as an equivalent piece of land with an equivalent-sized building, even if that building is closed, as opposed to as an operating business. And the way they've always, commercial businesses have always been taxed, it does take into account the value of their business and the value of their building. The Journal Sentinel had an article that showed that, in fact, when a lot of these stores sell their property, they're selling it millions more than the assessed price. So there's concern around the state. The interesting thing about this is it's one of those rare occasions where there's actually bipartisan support for this legislation. The main one they talked about was Assembly Bill 292, which would codify the basis for determining these property taxes. And it was introduced June 2nd by ten Republicans and seven Democrats, co-sponsored by many more from both parties. Was recently approved unanimously by the Senate Committee on Revenue, Financial Institutions, and Rural Issues. That, again, is a majority Republican committee because that's how the committees are all structured. But they unanimously voted for this. It's gone, it's ready for scheduling for a floor vote. The thinking, our Senator Mark Miller and Assembly Rep Jimmy Anderson were in attendance at this meeting also. They both thought if it can get to the floor, there is a reasonable chance it could pass. And it's making some of them nervous. It's kind of like, because the Wisconsin Manufacturing Commerce Group has come out against this, they're using some fairly strong language, calling it activist assessors, trying to change the established law so they can tax commercial properties on factors other than the value of property itself. And they believe that retailers are only reacting to what they think is previous inappropriate increases in their assessments. And if you look at the groups that have lined up against it, it's pretty predictable. It's all groups like that, Waukaree and CBS Pharmacy, that kind of thing. All the towns, there are a whole, there's a whole raft of communities who have issued resolutions in favor of this legislation, including Waukesha, Wauwatosa, Appleton, Green Bay. You know, a lot of, because in some of these rural communities, these are the only, the main businesses located there. So if this happens, it's a devastating blow to taxpayers statewide. It's also interesting to note that when these businesses come in, I remember when Walmart was interested in coming in, there was a lot of concern, pro and con about it. One of the arguments is what they'll do to benefit our tax base. So now that they've been here a while and they have benefited our tax base, they want to pull the rug out and reduce that. So it's a serious issue. And the problem is, the governor's been quiet on it because, of course, his big thing has been lowering property taxes. And he knows full well that this will dramatically increase property taxes. And yet, his campaigns are funded a lot from the WMC and various other groups. So, and that's true of a lot of the legislators. Majority Leader Scott Fitzgerald would need to agree to put this on the agenda. So the purpose of the meeting, I mean, you know, we are speaking to the choir. We're talking to Senator Miller and Representative Anderson. But also speaking to the choir, we talked to a lot of Republican legislators on this particular bill. So the main thrust of it, and why I wanted to bring it up tonight, was because their suggestion was, Dane County, you know, is already on record and the push can't come from here because our legislators already want to see this get to the floor. And they don't have the power to get it scheduled. So if we have relatives and friends over the holidays in the next couple of months and they asked, and they said, now is the time to start talking to people, just if we can talk to people about this issue so people understand it, it's kind of getting the word out. I mean, this happened back in June. And I was kind of vaguely aware of it, but I wasn't, it really didn't catch my attention until more recently when I started talking about it. And I think, you know, I try to stay on top of this stuff, sort of. And anyway, talking to friends and relatives who live in some of those districts, specifically Alberta Darling, who originally looked like she might favor the legislation, now is kind of pulling back. Stephen Nass is another one, the Whitewater area. If you have people, if you know people in those areas, you can get them to contact their representatives, not just those two, but to kind of say, hey, we really need to deal with this because this is going to be disastrous for the state in terms of property taxes if we don't. So that's why I included it, and I've got even more articles. Actually, a good site to go to is the, I'm going to say the, sorry, the League of Municipalities, Wisconsin League of Municipalities, has a very good website on this. They've come out strongly in favor of the legislation. And they've got a lot of links, and you can see what's going on in other states as well. Just brought it up for comment. I wasn't recommending that we take any action on it because I don't think that would be effective. I think it's really more a matter of just, I took this to my Dean House Board last night for the same reason. Just, I'm taking it to every group I go because I think it's just too important for us to be talking about it to people and get the word out.
I'll just add one point. Susan, excellent job summarizing everything with that. We had a little bit of a discussion last week about this at. We had a little bit of a discussion last week about this at some, with one of the other groups that I was, I think it was with the Foundation and Monona Chamber, and the question came up about with the school portion of it. Well, if, you know, the property values or the equalized value went down, we just make that up with state aid. And in theory, yes, as this aid formula is supposed to, you know, give more aid to districts that have lesser property values, but to say that would make up in a one-to-one, we certainly could not count on that. In general, I think we always say that we want a strong tax base, and so I don't think it would be accurate to say that, oh, we don't have to worry about it, we'll just get in state aid, because, and the other thing is, the proportion of state aid continues to go down as well, so I don't know if that's, you wanna expand on that, or if that's pretty accurate.
So, ultimately, when we talk about our revenue, it's all driven based on our student resident enrollments, and then what our total levy is subtracted out what we get for state aid. And as a negativeated district, the reason we're a negativeated district is because the equalization aid formula has been set up that says that if you have property per student, your property taxpayer should potentially pay it. So, if we lose that nineteen million dollars in the situation, low likelihood of our equalization aid going up, but it's not gonna go up to match it. But I think what the important part of it is, is that, you know, as we talk through operation referendums or any type of referendum, we're talking about, we can't just rely on residential growth in a school district. I mean, obviously, that brings our number of students, but we do need to rely on that commercial tax growth to help us with that. So, I mean, when we read that in the newspaper, and we hear that, and we see, yes, the district is not gonna lose the two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, it will shift who's paying for it, and it won't be just the City of Monona residents that are paying for that two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, it will be every resident in the district, Monona Grove. So, if it's one box store in Monona, or if it's eight, and they all will throw that, but just moving statewide, and being able to use that, you know, and that's the purpose of the TID and the TIFF district, is to grow that area, so then it does alleviate some of those tax burdens off since the district, or since the state still maintains funding schools through property taxes and other services through property taxes.
A couple of other things I thought of while we were talking, even if the equalized aid went up, given that this is gonna be a problem statewide, we would be playing, trying to play catch-up with the state aid. There'd be no more state aid to improve, and, you know, right now, we're trying to increase our state aid, and all we'd be able to do probably would be hold steady, which is, so really, it would, it once again would be using state aid to maybe help property taxpayers a little bit, but it wouldn't help our bottom line. The other thing I just wanted to clarify, because it was raised to me by a person at the meeting, was the question of revenue limit, and this doesn't really impact our revenue limit. We still have the same revenue limit, and that was the point, that we would just be trying to make up the same money elsewhere. So, just so, just so if you get questions about it. And I think people should feel free to have people call you guys, because it is really complicated. I mean, after I got that comment about the revenue limit, I thought that doesn't sound right to me, but I went online and started reading about the whole thing, and it's, I mean, it's, yeah, it's complicated. I'm glad I don't have to figure it out.
It's approximately.
The process, well.
It's approximately right, but then there's all these little second-order effects.
Yeah, the formulas, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Jennifer, I just had, and this goes back too far, I'm sorry, it was before the legislative report. In Keri's committee, they actually handed out a report, kind of a summary report of each of the groups. It was absolutely excellent, I know Keri actually was quoting off of at least one of those. It might be helpful, I think, for the community if they wanted to see kind of how those groups are working, to see those summary documents, so we might wanna post those underneath that report.
Yeah, they were, they were in there.
I was treating those as kind of internal documents, just for the committee's planning right now, because like for one example, the list of the community stakeholders that we identified in Monona and Cottage Grove are kind of incomplete lists, and I know the worst thing to do is send out a list that someone's left off of, and then they might be offended, or, so, we will definitely have for this group what that committee finalizes, but I was torn about what are considered drafts, and how do people see them, if they're, you know, released publicly, so I would defer to either Susan or Dan, where you're at with your groups, but the one that I was working on, we felt like still needed a little bit of review by other people before we wanted to possibly offend people who didn't show up on the stakeholders list.
Well, as an observer at the meeting, and again, that's all I am, because I'm not on the committee, when those were handed out, they appeared and were, appeared to be explained as kind of a summary of what you've done up to that point, and that's why I thought it was such an excellent document from each and every one of the groups. It's just a summary, it's not a draft or anything, it's just a summary of what they've done in the last two months, and they're meeting twice a month, so, kudos to those guys.
Thank you.
I would just mention, all those documents are available in Board Docs for public content now.
Oh, under the committee.
Under the committee meeting.
Oh, good, well, they weren't though that night.
Yeah, they were, but it was late, I mean, they got added late, they were on, at the time of the meeting, they were on.
Oh, okay.
Because I had looked at them during the meeting. So, they're definitely there. But I kind of agree with Keri that we, because we did tweak it, like we tweaked our charge, as she said, and that's not, I mean, it's in the report, but, I mean, I think it's fine when we prepare a final report.
I think that's great, as long as they're under, when I went in, I had not seen that they were posted.
Yeah, they are, so people can.
So, as long as they're committed to posting other committee work, that's great, that's great.
They're designing this committee work now, but we will definitely have something to bring forward to this group, and then you would see it on your Board Docs for this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Back to the Walmart thing?
Yes.
Can I also just add, I mean, just thinking about the layperson's understanding of this, is it feels to me like shifting the taxes at Walmart would be paying to homeowners in Cottage Grove and Monona.
That's correct.
And, I mean, that's just like the one-sentence summary of that to me, and, and sort of who thinks that's okay? And who doesn't think that's okay?
Right.
And so, I don't know where else to go with that, except marvel at why there's so much support for that.
Well, the support is for the legislation that would stop that from happening.
That's what I mean, or like the pushback to that.
And that's what's frustrating is, right, the pushback.
To me, that just is, is just a wonder.
Usual answer, follow the money, unfortunately. But that's why I say if people really start looking at it, I, there are a lot of legislatures, I'm sure, on a comfortable spot with this, because I think they, some of them wanna vote on it, and as Senator Miller said, if it does get to where it'll be pretty hard for people to vote against it, because their communities are gonna be hurt.
Yes. So, thank you for helping that.
And to be clear, it's not just Walmart.
No, it's.
Walmart would be the leading edge of this.
I just use that as the, yeah.
It's, and the problem is, in fact, we could deal with, I mean, dealing with Walmart, you know, okay, it's a hundred bucks, you know, compared to what would happen if Walmart prevails, is the big problem, which is now instead of paying a hundred dollars on your property tax, you're talking a thousand bucks for property taxes, because of all the places that will follow the lead with this. That is the issue, and it's sort of not just, it's easy to take Walmart, but actually Walgreens started this.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that in the.
Yeah.
The enormous cost to municipalities of defending suits, I mean, that's the other thing. You're talking tens of thousands, minimally a hundred thousand legal bills. So, it's, it's a huge issue.
So, thank you for staying up on that and helping us, yeah, with the stocks we need.
Yeah. I think it's just challenging when you see that the parking lots of the stores are busy and full, you know.
And the other, the other comment on Walmart specifically is the city of Monona, there provides a lot of services to that store. Police calls daily, three on average per day. If they perhaps beefed up their own security, that might cut that down, so, you know, we're already picking up some of their shares, so.
And their health insurance for their employees, and, 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 and.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready to move? Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to express some small amount of disgust before we moved on.
Noted. All right, that takes us to possible action items, of which we have one, and we've heard some voices already, and now we'll have an opportunity for further discussion. This is an agreement between the city of Monona and the Monona Grove School District Video Operations Joint Ownership thing. Do you want me to read the background piece, or do you think we're good?
If you like, sure.
All right, I'm happy to do that. In the executive summary, there is a background statement. The current community cable television agreement is from two thousand and six, so it's been revisited now. The programming, staffing and budget has changed significantly over that time period. The district and city administration has been working collaboratively in updating the agreement over this past year, and the city of Monona's community media, yeah, committee has reviewed and revised the agreement and voted November ninth to recommend an approval of the agreement by the city and district. So, our recommendation from our administration is the approval of the city of Monona and Monona Grove School District Video Operations Joint Ownership Agreement as presented.
I'd like to move approval of the city of Monona and Monona Grove School District Video Operations Joint Ownership Agreement as presented. All right, now we can discuss for like another half hour or something.
Discussion.
I guess I should ask the question, because I am a member of that committee, does that create a conflict of interest? I did not vote on the ninth, because I was not present at that meeting, but as a board member, I don't think it does. Do you think it's good?
Yeah, if I could speak to that, and the committee that Susan's referencing, I think we should make sure everyone understands for the record, there is a committee that's from the, it's a committee from the city of Monona, okay, appointed by the mayor, and the committee members on that, Jennifer Kerr chairs the committee, then Will Nemo, Matt Bittorf, and Eric Redding, who are here tonight, Lindsey Wood Davis, Valerie Hine-Hamstra, myself, Susan Manning, both sit on the committee, as well as Carol Davic and Greg Little. And so, that committee is an advisory committee, and that was their role in, you know, looking at this agreement and making the recommendation that it moves forward to the city council for approval, as well as our school board. So, with that, as I mentioned, we've been spending quite a bit of time on this. So, Jared and myself, on behalf of the district, have met, you know, more than once with April Lettle, who is the city administrator, of course, Will Nemo was very instrumental in putting this together. And essentially, the agreement reflects what has been the practice for the last few years. And so, it's not in any change at all, as far as what is happening, but it does spell out more accurately about what the relationship has become. And then as far as the, you know, financial commitment, again, both the city and the school district have an increased obligation as the, as the program has expanded. We now have two full-time staff members, so both Will Nemo and Justin Janis. Justin is either full-time or very close to full-time, and so both those individuals work with our students. As stated by Eric and Matt, the student benefit is obvious, as far as the opportunities, you know, for them. But the other piece of that is the opportunity, as a district, we benefit, and it is a matter of, part of our communication tool, and it does, and one of the things that Jared and I looked at really carefully is on, as far as benefiting the district, to make sure it benefits all, the entire school district, that even though the agreement's with the city of Monona, but it benefits the Cottage Grove part of the district as well. And we do have, through the communications, as we know, the main thing is now through live streaming, as well as available through YouTube, but it does also show on the cable access for both Cottage Grove and Monona. One of the challenges that the committee has faced is this has been very largely funded in the past on the, what's the word I'm looking for, the fees from the cable. Franchise fees, thank you. And as we know, those have become quite stagnant, and we expect them probably to decline in the future. And so, it's gonna mean a little bit larger commitment, you know, perhaps moving forward. But I'll also reiterate what both Matt and Eric said, what an unbelievable opportunity that we have, and, you know, for our school district. There are very, very few that have, you know, this sort of relationship, and for us to try to do something like this on our own, without the agreement and help with the city, would be, you know, next to impossible. So, we're thrilled to have it, we, and it's continuing to grow and get better, I think, as each year goes by. So, with that, it's an enthusiastic recommendation that we, you know, please keep this agreement.
Any other comments or discussion? Are we ready for a vote? All right, all those in favor of approval of this new agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. This motion is approved. I just had to do that.
I was looking to see if there was any celebratory.
Any confetti?
Jennifer, even though I know it's reflected that way, but I think it would be nice, particularly for this agreement, to show that there was unanimous approval.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you, yay. It's the little things. All right, seeing nothing in our discussion section, wow. That'll be different next month, I think. And our future meetings are posted, yeah, on our, on our Board Docs. Without anything else, we need a motion for adjournment.
I'd like to move to Janet, seven fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have one comment. Do we have a plan for the presentation of the school reports?
Who cares?
Not specifically right now, so what we have, you know, we shared it out electronically.
Right, I can read it, but it would be really nice to have.
So, is your recommendation that it be included in our December meeting, or in some other fashion?
I'm recommending that there at least be in the superintendent's report, or the mention of this, and then the increment, maybe put up the incremental balance. Again, I've looked at these meetings, and people say, are you not talking about the kids anymore? And when you look at this, you're, yeah, I said we're talking about the budget, that's totally about the kids. But curriculum, instruction, program reporting, and chief.
We have a board workshop at our next meeting.
But we don't prioritize that.
To me, I'm just gonna beg to differ a little bit, I would rather hear that kind of curriculum discussion than focus on these reports, because these aren't really useful to me. I mean, they're, they're good for as much as they do, but they're very limited. And I would much rather have a more in-depth discussion on, which I think you have plenty of.
And if you have that planned, that's great.
We're in the middle of a motion, and we're having discussions, so I'm. We've had a motion, we've had a second, and now we just need to vote to adjourn, please.
We're allowed to have discussion after the motion, after the second.
On adjournment, though, on the subject of adjournment.
Yeah, that's right.
We have a motion on the floor. We just need to please, yes, let's have a vote, please. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. We are adjourned, thank you.